Agenda.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to approve the agenda for the July 12 IG Recommendations Committee meeting.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion has been made by Ms. Porter and second by Mr. Trapp. Is there any discussion? Seeing that there's no discussion, may we have a vote?
Affirmative.
Yep, affirmative. All right. The vote is six ye- I'm talking about six yes. The vote is three yes, zero no. The motion passed. We're going to go ahead and move on to new business. No action required with item 3.1, the Discussion of Policy B.C. Board Member Conduct. Just to give some background for those that are watching on live stream, based on the recommendations from the IG report, board conduct was one of those areas that was, while it wasn't mentioned specifically about the policy, a lot of the verbiage centered around board members not following policy, board members, we heard the words dysfunction. And then recently in our stakeholder survey, we received lots of feedback from our community in regards to, you know, their perception of how we are actually functioning as a board. So with those items, it brought for us to really begin to dive deep into looking at our policy on board conduct. And so as the committee chair, I went out and researched several different policies by other school boards, pulled a couple of policies together, and we presented the board with some of the revisions. Those revisions were presented in the board meeting in June, and the board decided that we would table the further discussion after a few comments were made regarding concerns about the policy. And so here we are tonight to really dive into this policy and look at board member conduct so that we can make sure that we're appropriately addressing, but that we also have measures in place to be able to hold ourselves accountable so that we can conduct the business that we've been, you know, appointed to be able to do. So I will open up the floor to either one of my committee members if they want to start the discussion, just send it around some of the feedback that we did receive from a board member, as well as any other suggestions from the committee on how we want to move forward in this, with this particular policy.
May I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
I want to make sure I know exactly what we're doing. The policy that has been proposed, or the changes have been proposed, everything that is underlined is a new proposal, and I don't see anything on here where we're removing anything from existing policy. Is it, is the only thing we're doing is adding to the policy?
That's correct.
Okay. And there were concerns by another board member about some of the things that we're wanting to add. Do we want to have a discussion about how that might be impacted?
Yeah, we definitely can start. I think one of the concerns was paragraph two and three. The paragraph on the policy is not meant to take away a member's right to free speech. The paragraph that started, "Board Members Will Build Trust and Ensure," so forth and so on. So those two paragraphs, it was recommended that we delete. The main concern was that this isn't just about elected officials having freedom of speech, but our constituents should be able to speak freely. My only concern with that particular feedback is that this is a board policy, this is a policy for board member conduct, so not so much for constituents to be able to speak free. And then it says, "It is agreed that it needs to be done professionally without name-calling." And so I think, and then the second concern was focusing on priorities set forth by the board. As a board, we, when we came in November, we didn't have any priorities. We didn't have any goals. And I think that is something that we've all said, that as a board, we would like to make sure that working with our superintendent, we have goals that we can begin to work on in priority so that we'll have things to measure for success as well. So that was where that particular wording came in. And then the third concern for those, that, those first two paragraphs, avoiding embarrassing comments. The board member feels like that's completely suggestive, subjective. And so we want to look at being able to make sure the wording is not subjective, but still gets the message across.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
I read through those concerns, and I understand that it is subjective. However, it can create an atmosphere amongst board members, and there was a suggestion of how to have conversations should someone feel offended or have a situation and they need a third party to help mediate. And I think that's where those conversations take place. And should something become where someone feels as though they are embarrassed by something that someone has said, that's where I think that line of information is there, where it makes it so that this is something we can discuss. Because it's in the policy, I want to talk about this because I felt embarrassed when. But it's more so of something to have a conversation amongst board members when they feel like the decorum is on that line of being, crossing that line of professional and/or unprofessional, in that sense. And I understand that it's subjective, but it's one of those things where it may not be on black or white, but more so a conversation that needs to be had between colleagues. I did also see that there were two suggestions.
Okay.
And so I'd rather get to our suggestions. And that was at the bottom of that email where it was, "A member must be recognized by board chair or committee chair before speaking." I think that is something that's known, but if it's not already written in the policy, we can go ahead and put that in place.
Yeah.
And "Do not interrupt who has the floor," to be done both in public and executive session. I don't think that anyone does that intentionally, but to have it in the policy, therefore, if it's a continuous habit, it can be discussed. Number two, each member may only speak twice on an agenda item. I never thought of that, but I could see how it can be an issue if we're talking about something and it goes on and on. And it will also have each board member put a little bit more thought into our comments. I know I'm probably guilty of that myself. So I think it will help us all be a little bit more accountable of the things that we are saying and put a little bit more thought into those suggestions.
Yes, I can agree that we should add those two. And then also, especially that second one, it helps it so that one person isn't dominating the conversation, but it gives people just equal opportunity to be able to speak throughout the whole meeting. And then I also feel like that'll help flow, help with the flow of the meetings as well. So we definitely, if that is something that we're in agreeance with, to be able to add those two items, or if we look at what we already have to see if there's an area where we can kind of plug some of that language in. And I know what'll happen is we can take these suggestions and our, and if we, there are things that we want to go ahead and cross off or add, then we can take these notes and give them to Dr. Franklin, and the administration will, you know, get the wording right for us. And then the next step is if we need to have our board, if that's something that we agree on, that we need to have our board attorney review the policy once all of the corrections are made, then that's something we can do. But do we see an area where we can add number one without having to add another bullet? Or are there any of these bullets, which these bullets really have already been there and outlined by the School Board Association? So I feel like we should keep those things in there. No, there isn't any reference to Robert's Rules of Order in the Board Member Conduct.
Sorry, I forgot. Robert's Rules does specifically address some of the things that we're talking about in here, and in some ways this is redundant. That redundancy is not a bad thing necessarily, but I can understand why another board member is suggesting that we not keep some of this because it is redundant. But for example, the, as far as I can tell, I've been reading as much as possible and I've been reading books that are supplements, and I don't always trust those things because that's someone's opinion and not necessarily the actual Robert's Rules. But for example, if we're having a debate, no person is allowed to speak twice until everyone has had an opportunity to speak once. And, you know, so that's something that's clearly spelled out in Robert's Rules, so theoretically no one should be able to speak over others and things like, and you're not supposed to speak unless you've been given the floor by the chairman in whatever meeting we're in. So those things are covered in Robert's Rules, but if we want to put them in here, it's fine, but I can see why someone would object or be concerned. I'm, I'm one of these people that like to keep things as clean as possible. When I was a teenager, I took all the emblems off my car because I didn't want to advertise for Ford or anybody like that. So I just really like to keep things as simple and to the point as possible. And I think one of the other concerns that has been shared with us is if we're going to have some inappropriate behavior talked about, if there's no way to measure that behavior, to see, to determine the severity, and then determine what needs to be done to not correct, but to, I don't want to use the word punish, but I can't think of a better word right now, but to, to hold someone accountable. If we don't have a means to hold someone accountable, it's no point in having it in there too.
Okay.
But I think that's the concerns, and I share those concerns somewhat, but we need to make sure that we define everything very clearly.
Okay.
I often like to think about what, what people could do to get around something, and then you have to, you have to write rules in a way where people can't get around it if that's your goal.
In that area for the process for addressing board members, again, we looked at other districts and just pulled together some things that they already had in place. It's just a suggestion, and we definitely can take that part out because it's a little unclear right now about how we want to approach somebody addressing a violation of a board member, other than what has already been outlined by the governor, who, that's a step further of removing a board member. I really, as I was thinking about this, I really said, "A lot of this is really like managing adult behavior," if I can be honest. And it's hard to do that. And I think Ms. Porter brought up a really great, she said something, you know, really profound, that we should be able to just go to someone if they're offended, if you're offended or something is embarrassing, and if a second person is required to be mediated. I think that's where the process needs to come in so that somebody else is not offended. But a lot of this is just really, it seems like we're trying, we're managing adult behavior, but we also have to be able to own up to some things when we know that it's not right. And that's where these, some of these bullet points come in to be able to say, "Hey, this is not appropriate, and this is how we need to address it," or "This is a violation of this part of the policy." And a lot of that also, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Mr. Trapp, but a lot of that also comes into play with the, the chair and the board leadership being able to have some of those same conversations as well. And although it's not spelled out in there, that is something that's in Robert's Rule, that the board chair should address some of those things as well. So if we are, if we're all on the same page, that we're going to delete the process for addressing the board member violation, are we all okay with that?
My question.
Go ahead.
My question would be, do we know exactly how would the board chair address the situation? Because it's clear and evident that situations like that were not handled in the past, which is why it was included in the report. And our purpose, this committee's purpose is so that it doesn't happen again. And so we want to ensure that this cycle does not repeat itself.
Is it possible for us to include some of that same language from Robert's Rules of Order about how, it doesn't spell out how the board is to, the chair is to address it. It just pretty much says that the chair is going to address.
If I may, I think the, I don't think we can prevent people from doing unkind or unwise things, saying things. It'd be great if we could, and I'll give you an example. I remember we had, we were in executive session one time, and I said something. I said, "We and Mrs. Porter did not agree with what I was saying. You called me," and I, and I took that back and stated, "I." That's, when, when members do something that is not correct or offensive or whatever, if they will own it and move on, everything will work great. But what we're talking about here is trying to regulate, like you, like you said, trying to make adults behave a certain way. It's going to be difficult to do that. Now, I'll tell you this, I believe it is, in my mind, it's fairly clear in Robert's Rules that if someone is out of line, the chairman is supposed to call them down on the spot, but, but you have to be as very specific on how you do that. You're not, you're to avoid using names, you're to use titles, you're not to refer to anyone by their name, you refer to them as a member and things like that. So I think the biggest thing about Robert's Rules is you're supposed to keep it from being personal. But, but if someone sits there and calls someone across the room a name, that, it becomes personal instantly. So the real, the real dilemma I see, and I'll tell you what might be the best thing we could do, no matter what we do with this, it might be good for us to literally do some training and have a parliamentarian come in and, because it's like I was telling somebody the other day, people, people will say, "Well, we've been doing it this way forever." Well, it doesn't matter that you were doing it wrong forever. We need to make sure we're doing it right. And some of this stuff is very complicated, and again, if we all behave properly, it's not a big deal. If everybody will own up to things that they say that might not be appropriate, it's not a big deal. But, but people will say things inappropriate, and we have to be able to address that. So anyway, I realize that just complicated things didn't help, but nonetheless.
No, I think the biggest thing is for us to determine how we want to address the violations. If it's not in the manner that's spelled out in, in the draft policy here, it's pretty much how do we want to address it? And if we want it to be aligned to Robert's Rules, then we will need to utilize some of that language. And then we can also make a recommendation as a committee that we have training on Robert's Rules of Order and parliamentarians. So that is another recommendation that we can make, and that's something we can do in a future board retreat. But that's the thing, we have to determine how do we, what is going to be our process to address board member violations. And so that's the language that we'll need to, to figure out. And, and I also, if, if we go back and we look at, you know, previous boards, the reason it was noted in the report, which is before we got on the board, is because some of these same things were happening in previous board meetings. So it has not been addressed. And so we have to be very clear in that, and really, you know, helping people to understand that it has been a continuous problem as a board. And so I feel like it's great for us to have these things in place so that we can always, just like we like to refer to policy for everything else, when it comes to how we conduct ourselves in business, doing business, it's very easy for us to say, "Well, we expect everybody to behave like they're supposed to." But this is a safeguard, and these are guidelines in place. And let's even think about the future of the board. This is a discussion that should be had in a board training, and we, I was, I didn't get any of that. And we're expected to know a lot of policies, but this is something that we can say that as a committee, we put these things in place to ensure that the future of our board, that we have these things in place to address that behavior, because this behavior has been known to carry on from, you know, board to board to board. And this right here helps us to put a stop to it. And like I said, it's twofold. It is feeling like it's monitoring adult behavior, but at the same time, these are things that were clearly addressed in that survey as well as in, in the IG report. It talked often about how the, the district could not do business because it was dealing so much of what was happening on the board. And it affected how the, how administration was not able to carry out some of the things because our job is to be that, that person that's working with the superintendent. And so this also even addresses superintendent and board relations, because without some of these things in place, it's, you're going to continue to have that dysfunction. So I, I think that we need to have a policy, whether we have people who agree with the language or not, we need to be able to take a stand and say, "We are going to put some things in place, and we're expecting, you know, board leadership to be able to hold people accountable for their actions." Yes.
I'm particularly in favor of the removal of a board member from a leadership position, and particularly because should that, someone in a leadership position violating board conduct multiple times, how does one address that situation with someone who's in leadership on the board? And not only that, when you are in leadership, you're representing the entire board and many times speaking for the entire board. And should you have, be that representative and violate board member conduct, and we have nothing in place to do anything about it?
Right.
To me, that's a great concern, because other board members won't be able to do anything about it because that's their role.
Right. I agree. And it's the same for ethics. There are, there's a whole ethics policy that holds us as individuals accountable for what we do as a board member. And a lot of this also ties into some of the things that are outlined in that particular policy. But I do agree with Ms. Porter is that if we have, if I was the committee chair and my behavior violated some of these things, or, you know, many of these things that are listed here, then I feel like it should be, you know, in the best interest that I'm not representing the board, and so I should step down, or I should be removed from my position. And then we also have to think about things like in organizations, these are some of the same expectations that are had that are laid out for leaders as well. And so I want us to keep that in mind, and I do appreciate the feedback from our board colleagues because we, we need that feedback to help us craft this verbiage. But I also want us to be very conscious of the decorum that we have to display on a daily basis, on a weekly basis, when we are in the public's eye and when we're conducting business behind closed doors in our executive sessions.
Might I suggest that also, we were talking about where to get the verbiage, just because it is board member conduct, maybe reaching out to South Carolina.
School Board Association.
School Board Association, just so that it's neutral.
Okay. Or what about our board attorney?
Board attorney as well, but if, without cost. If we want to try them first, since we're members, I would go there first.
All right. So Ms. Porter is recommending that we keep the process for addressing board members, especially number two. And I'm in favor of keeping number one because you want to have the conversation in a private session as well. And we can remove number three because that's.
It's gray.
That is very gray. So we can take number three out and keep number one and two. And then in the first two paragraphs that were added, is there anything that the committee is recommending that we address or remove, address by removing, adding something? What are your thoughts in those areas?
If I may, just, the first paragraph, it is, it's a fine paragraph, but I don't, I think it doesn't add anything to the policy, because it's stating what I would consider to be the obvious, but that doesn't mean it should be taken out. I'm just, I don't, I don't think that it adds anything.
Okay.
I think that first paragraph is for those who may feel that that's what the intent is of the policy, more so a statement that that's not the intent. Because that, you, that has been something that has come up. We've heard it once before, but it isn't. The intent is, it's the response to what we've seen in the IG report, based on board member conduct.
Yeah. And it was added because it was said in a couple of executive sessions regarding the free speech, or it was said by board members regarding their free speech. We were having, and even when we talk about using social media, I think it was brought up by one of our, in a board retreat or something about the use of social media, and a board member felt like they still should be able to utilize their social media to convey certain information. I know I use mine to update, I use mine to share my, my personal opinions about certain things that are happening in the community. And so that is why that particular line was added in there. And again, and then I also saw it in another, I'll say it was Ory County's board, they have a whole board governance policy document, and this was in there as well.
I would like some clarity about social media, now that you've mentioned that. If the difference between posting things on a social media page that is you representing the school district and then versus you as an individual, and if that even exists, because we have had that come up in question, and people giving their personal opinions about events taking place within our school district, and then them not holding a position where they speak for the board. So that may need to be clarified in board member conduct if it's not within your role.
You're not the, the person.
Mm-hmm.
I believe it was Ms. Agostini who shared, "There is a policy where you are able to share, but you hadn't," and it's, and you, I think you even, it's even outlined here, explicitly identifying your opinion as personal versus saying that this, you speak on behalf of the board. But there is a policy that addresses that. Yeah.
What if the page is about, is a board page?
Is your.
A board member page?
You can still do it. Yeah, as long as you are clear that it's your, your opinion and not that representing the board.
Misinformation?
Yeah, that was another concern about the misinformation or giving misinformation, and that's in the last line, or the second to the last line. Misinforming the board of information, refraining from hidden agendas. So is that something that we feel that we need to remove from, from the policy? And I'm trying to look to see if any of the bullet points speak to that so that it's not. Yeah. It could be the represent the board and district and to the public in such a way that promotes both interest and support. So we could remove that line because there's a bullet that pretty much speaks to that already.
It does.
So, yeah. Yeah, I guess refraining from hidden agendas, misinforming the board of information, and praising the board and district publicly. And the recommendation that was given about each, or each, let me see, "Do not interrupt who has the floor," to be done in both public and executive session. You know, the bullet that says, "Work harmoniously with other board members without trying to either dominate the board or neglect one share of the work." Would you all say that would be, well, there is a bullet that actually speaks to that, except the will. except the will of the majority vote in all cases and support the resorting policy or, or addition. So we could scratch out the line or the, the part that says respecting decisions of the full board because it's mentioned in the bottom as well.
The only thing I would want clarity on is on the second page on the three, the three conditions. On the first one, it says conversation in a, in a private setting between the offending board member and the board chair, comma, vice chair, or other designated individual member. My question would be, how would we determine, there's three people, potentially three people mentioned there that would have the possible responsibility to speak to the offending board member. Is this something that, would it be, I was, who would decide who's going to speak to the board member? I, I'm assuming the chair would be the default person to speak. For it to be the vice chair or a individual member, is that something that the officers should decide or would the chair delegate that responsibility? That'd be my only question. I, I would, I would like some clarity on that, just, just so someone couldn't say later that they didn't have clarity.
I took that to mean in the event that the people involved were one of those officers, you would need another person. So should it be the vice chair and the chair who have the problem? You would need another person. Or if it's the chair and another board member, it would be the vice chair who would be the third person. So they listed all of those positions depending on the situation.
Okay. Let, let me role play a second.
Okay.
Let's, I'm, I'm assuming the way this is written, that there would only be one offensive person involved. So if the board chair, if the board chair, someone off, says something offensive, offensive directed toward the board chair, would we then assume that the, the, someone other than the board chair should address that? Is that what we're concluding from that? In that case, then the vice chair would be the default person. If the vice chair and the chairman have an, an, an argument, then the secretary perhaps? And then it would, it would just, and if someone else was, I, I'm going to assume too that there would be situations where someone might be best able to address a situation because of a, a, some, a relationship of some sort and, and then someone would decide that person X would be best to pull person Y aside and say, look, this was, this, this shouldn't happen this way, have a conversation with them. Who would decide who, who the designated person would be? Is that something that the board chair or the vice chair would decide? And I'm just trying to make sure we, we don't have any confusion down the road if this happens.
Both parties are agreeing.
Okay. Well.
I guess a discussion just needs to be had.
Well, well, the way it's written then, is, is that something if, if it comes up, we'll just, it, it would, it would work itself out, you think, or?
I mean, or we can have Dr. Franklin word it in a way that conveys what we, what we wanted to convey. So basically, if there is somebody who is offended, there needs to be a conversation between the two people. Is that what we're, we are saying that first bullet should be addressing?
I'm of the opinion if someone, and I'm, I'm basing this on things I've witnessed, not, not just since being elected to the board, but in, in board meetings in the past. I remember a specific meeting in particular where the, the board chair and another member of the, of the board had an exchange that was very unpleasant. And in that situation, you know, obviously someone other than the board chair would have, should have, but, but I guess my point is, well, you know, in that particular case, I think both of them were offensive.
Yeah.
So I guess there is a potential for it to be more than one person.
If it's in a private setting.
Yeah, yeah.
Somebody has to make that call.
Yeah. They would have to, or vice chair or, yeah.
I would say that it has to take place in a private setting and someone has to make that call. And having this in place and written, we all are aware of it and know that it has to happen.
You know, what might be helpful on that paragraph is to put some, put, put something in there that would eliminate the offending people from that chain of, of authority. In other words, if the board chairman is involved in, in, in an argument with someone, then, then it would fall to the vice chair and, you know, that, something like, I don't know how to word that, but it would be, it needs to be a clear, I'm sure our Congress has some very clear rules on things like that, you know, but.
So basically, we, we just want to reword the, the first, that first point about how that conversation, who should have the conversation and how it'll take place.
And the thing that I, I think we, more than anything, we should reword it in a way to where no individual should think that it is their responsibility to put themselves in that position to call someone out. It should have, it should have a, a very clear order, chain of command, for lack of a better word. Just so that, for example, what we definitely don't want to have happen is inappropriate behavior to take place and then someone completely uninvolved decide, take it upon themselves to intervene because then that could create a bigger problem.
Right. So it should be strictly to the board leadership, basically.
Yeah. I think, I think that's the safest thing to do. And if the board leadership is involved, then it would work its way down because, you know, we, we've got three.
Yeah.
Board officers. And, and I think I can say with confidence that our three board officers are not going to, all three, do something.
Putting policy in place for the future.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. So we'll, we'll, I'll work with Dr. Franklin to help us word that so that it focuses on the conversation being started by board leadership. And if it involves one of the board leaders, then it will default to like, I guess, like the secretary. If it was the secretary, well, and I would hope that the board chair at the time, if something like that happened, would then be able to talk to, you know, if it was the secretary. So we can word it to where it focuses on those conversations starting with board leadership. And then the second one would stay in place of the, you know, possible removal. And it says possible, you know, would, yeah, now would that be by vote or would that be by board leadership decision?
That has to be stated.
That would have to be stated as, yeah, as well.
Is there a current policy that allows us to remove?
Not, from, nothing in place to remove from board leadership positions or committees.
Well, if we're going to leave that in there, we, we, we should in the future come up with a protocol and therefore a policy.
Yeah.
And that might be something the state association has, you know, they probably, there has to be a policy like that out there somewhere.
Yeah. So we can definitely find out from the South Carolina School Board Association. And if I'm not mistaken, I think we have access to all of their policies. Is that correct?
The ones that are posted. Some of these have your own, um, you're coordinating, the ones that are posted.
Okay. So we can research and find out if there are board policies that are in place regarding the removal of a board member from any leadership or committee positions. We know that we just approved a policy for, that aligns with what the governor has in place, but this is just strictly to board leadership and committees. So we'll, I'll definitely work with administration, with Dr. Franklin, so we can research that.
If I may say, if, if any, I'm assuming this, if any school board has such a policy, it will be, it'll have a title that I think all of, all of us will use. I mean, just like the, the policy they sent us about the governor, you know, the governor having, that, that was a policy that had a very specific set of letters to it. So if we, if they, if anybody has something, we should be able to look at it with other districts for sure.
Yeah. And I know this part of the policy came from a neighboring district that they added to board member conduct. So they have a policy BC and this bottom part is what they added to their board member, their policy BC as well. So we'll find out, we'll research and see if there is a policy that is in place for removing board members from leadership positions. There are leadership positions that are spelled out, but it doesn't say anything in the policy referring to having to remove a board member for board conduct. So we, we'll, we can research and find out. So we're clear on, we're going to keep the process for addressing board member violations. What about that paragraph that opens up that section? Is there anything in that paragraph that we need to reword or revise or remove from that section?
You're talking about the?
The, yeah, that one. Because that's another one that was added in.
If I may say, that, that, that paragraph almost has to stay because it sets up the two points below it. I mean, without it, they, they, they wouldn't have any meaning, I think.
All right. So as a committee, we're going to agree to keep the process for addressing board member violations with the paragraph that pretty much opens up those three, but we're going to remove number three because it's, it's not something that we are very clear on at this time. We will keep number one and number two, but we are seeking, seeking the advice and assistance of the School Board Association and administration for us to review some policies that are already existing and for us to come up with the wording for number one and two, just to revise that wording. For board leadership addressing an individual member as well as for removing board members from a leadership or committee position. So that is for the process for addressing board member violations. And the fir, on the first page, are we in agreeance to keeping the first part that says board conduct is not meant to take away a member's right to free speech or do we want to just remove that? Since it's almost like it's a given, we know that as individual board members, we still do have a right to speak.
If I may add, I, I don't think it's necessary, but at the same time, if, if others feel that, because like you said, we're setting this up for the next board too, if someone's coming in, if that will help them feel, help them understand that they can't be silenced by people, then, then there's a reason, there's a reason it can't stay in there. I just, I, to me, it doesn't add anything, but maybe that's because I already know all this, so that, you know, we have to, we have to look at everything through other people's eyes when it comes to stuff like this.
Okay. So we'll leave it in there. And for the second paragraph, we're going to remove, on the second line, we're going to remove the phrase that says respecting decisions of the full board because there already is a bullet that addresses that. We are also going to remove on the fourth line, the phrase that says refraining from hidden agendas, misinforming the board of information. And the fifth line praising the board, and praising the board and district publicly as there already is a bullet point that addresses that. So the paragraph will say, board members will build trust and ensure a conducive environment for governance by focusing on priorities set forth by the board, avoiding embarrassing comments about board members and/or the district, using the appropriate decorum when acting, and using the appropriate decorum when acting as a board member. With what was just stated, is there anything else in there that you all feel that we can remove because it's addressed at the bottom in some shape, form, or fashion or anything that we may need to just revise the wording? Okay, I do have one. Where we talk about focusing on priorities set forth by the board, as I'm just reading through this. So thank y'all for being open to us having a discussion about this. Where it says, remember that the first and greatest concern must be the educational welfare of all, that is our priority there. And so when we talk about setting forth priorities for the board, I really feel like that would address, and then it says have a general knowledge of educational aims and objectives of the district. Those objectives, we recently laid out with our strategic plan. We, you know, we have our new tagline, we've got some, some pillars that we are, we received. And so I think that will speak to that first line that says focusing on board priorities. Okay. All right. So let's strike that. By focusing on board priorities, we just need to revise this whole paragraph, it seems like. Go ahead.
Is this considered a first reading, what we're doing right now? Tell me again.
Um, no. It will be a first reading. I have to go back and look, the timeline, the first reading will be on the first day of school, August 8th. So that's when the first reading will be.
Okay. So my concern is because we did receive lots of concerns, like towards the end of this, and we have spent quite a bit of time meeting. And so I would suggest, should we have any more feedback from our board members that we ask that they bring suggestions?
Yeah.
Because we've looked at this so many times together that with whatever it is that they have a concern about, that it come with a suggestion that they think would fix it and address the issue. Because I don't think, what, what I don't think will change is that we know it's an issue because we, we've seen, we have evidence that supports that it's an issue. So what we'll end up doing is coming back to the drawing board, saying this is an issue, how do we address it? And just to make sure that it moves forward, we would like for feedback to come with a suggestion.
Okay.
At this time.
Right. I agree.
That's how we're going to keep board meetings to an hour and fifteen minutes. Really? That, yes.
It is. Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, I understand that this matter, matter is also on your board retreat agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Perfect. So we'll be able to present something clean to them, get the feedback, and we're going to, I think we said we're going to, let's do a fifteen minute discussion. Yes. We'll make sure they have a copy of the, a clean copy before the retreat. And then that way they, we can come to the board retreat with, we've read the clean copy, you know, let's have a discussion about it. And then just, you know, also letting people know we took into consideration things that were said at the last board meeting as well as what was shared via email. So right now, that paragraph, just read, board members will build trust using the appropriate decorum when acting as a board member. And then we still have referred to board members by name or the titles given that we can leave in there. And then also explicitly identify one, one's opinion. And it is in policy BEDI. That's what it is. And so we, I'll also ask Dr. Franklin to add that in here, that it's a reference to, there's a reference to that policy for that particular line. But everything else is the actual policy that comes from the School Board Association with the additions that we just discussed. Anything else? Well, I feel good about that conversation. All right. So final changes, we're going to leave that first one in there. That second one will just have that one line, that board members will build trust and use the appropriate decorum when acting as a board member. And actually, we could just probably move that as a bullet to the bottom so that it's not standalone as a one sentence up there. And then again, we have refer to board members, explicitly identify one's opinion, and then we have the process for addressing board members, which we're going to do some research and be able to give them a clean copy by August the 3rd. All right. Moving on to the, is, is that it for everybody? Great. Moving. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, it's going to be item 3.2, District Administration Updates. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Chair. So we have two additional Fiscal Affairs Recommendations that have been completed. This is the adoption of the Procurement Code and the submission of the Budget Request for an Internal Auditor Position. The completion of these two items brings our Fiscal Affairs category to 100% completion. Yes, we're very excited about that. One additional Board of Trustees Recommendation has been completed. It is the revision to the Administrative Rule KI-R. The revision was submitted to the School Board Association. The revised administrative rule has been uploaded to the online policy manual with a June 26, 2023 effective revision date. Overall, 89% of the recommendations have been addressed. We anticipate the completion of the one remaining Board of Trustees Recommendation in August. There is one human capital recommendation with a January 2024 anticipated completion date and another with a July 2024 anticipated, anticipated completion date. So per Cognia's request, the District's response to the SIG Report has been linked in the working document. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you so much, Dr. Moore, for those updates. 89% complete, which shows that our District is committed to ensuring that we have the right measures and the safeguards in place to be able to conduct business because this is really all about our students. And so we need to have those behind the scenes things in order, which is why you hear us having this discussion about Board of Trustees Conduct. And as it was stated, you know, this is also for the future of the Board. One of our Board colleagues, I love to hear her say that we can be the leading Board and District in South Carolina, and I truly and honestly believe that with all of my heart, and I know that my Board colleagues share the same sentiments as well. And so thank you, Dr. Moore, and the Administration for all of the hard work that the Administration has been doing to address some of those areas. I know that one of them is quite lengthy because it's going to take more than just making a decision. There are so many other departments involved when it comes to, it's the timesheet, the, if the public wants to know, it's the one about the timesheets and making sure that we have something consistent across the Board in place. And so that's going to require procurement getting involved, it's going to require IT getting involved, we got to make sure that we have the right system. Lots of training is going to have to take place across the District. And so, again, that's one of those things that'll be completed by next summer, but I am just really excited to just hear the, the completion of where we're headed. And this also lets the, the community know that we take these things serious because, again, when we look at the heart of the matter, it's about our students and the outcomes that we want to see. So thank you to all of the Committee for the work that you've been doing and showing up at these meetings and reviewing things, and, again, thank you to Administration for your hard work. We are going to go ahead and adjourn, so may I have a motion to adjourn our IG Committee Meeting?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that we adjourn the IG Committee Meeting, July 12, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, the motion has been made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Ms. Porter. Board Members, please vote with your right hand, the affirmative. All right, that's three and zero, motion passed. Have an amazing evening, everyone.